Alright, so the board proposed budget. Is twenty-three million four hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars or an increase of just over two million dollars for a nine point three six percent increase. So we do understand that that is a large increase and we'll explain some of the rationale and reasoning behind the increase. Of that increase, eight million thirty-six thousand is chipping out. So that's the people, basically education is a human resource intensive endeavor and that's where the majority of our monies are spent as far as running schools. Tuition is another big portion of our budget, so over six million dollars. And that's tuition to Woodstock Academy and tuition to some of the special needs facilities in the area, including Tilly and we go at as well. District benefits and subs, this is where our health insurance and other things substitute teacher funds come in at three million dollars. Special education, so this is special education competitions. As well as staff in the special education program, so that again, if you look at it is three million sixty-seven thousand. Transportation, one point seven eight million, and that is our DAPCO contract. And as you know, several years ago about what was it now, Mike, is it? Eight years now that we've been with DAPCO, I think it's, you know, before that we ran our own transportation system, which I can imagine was pretty expensive, especially considering you'd purchase and reopen your buses every few years. Maintenance budget is seven hundred five thousand. District-wide support, that's basically the district office. Salaries in the district office mine, Janice Thurlow's and running the district functions. Middle school, this is basically their middle school programs and supply, so it doesn't have more personnel costs there, which are a big chunk of that April money. And then the elementary school, a hundred and eighteen thousand. And to give you a better view of it in slices of pie, again, personnel, thirty-four percent of the budget. Tuition, twenty-six percent of the budget. Your district benefits again with health insurance substitutes, that's thirteen percent. Special education is thirteen percent. Transportation is eight percent and then as we get to the lesser figures, maintenance, keeping all of these buildings running is three percent. District office is two percent and then middle school and elementary school. The supply portion of those schools take about one percent, so you can see tuition and personnel are the biggest slice of the pie. So maybe you're asking yourself, why are they going up so much? So what I wanted to do is give you a perspective of what some of the increases cover and what impacts those increases. So contractual obligations, those are our negotiated contracts that we have with the teachers, the parent professionals, custodians. That negotiated increase is two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for next year. Transportation, that's our DAPCO contract, I believe we went up five percent, our contract went up five percent this year.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, and we also have two million old bus runs which impact our special education cost, so the transportation has gone up considerably at four hundred thousand dollars. The Connecticut Health Insurance Fund, which we are a part of, it's called the Partnership Plan two point O. That increase is four hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. So as you can see, these things that we have driving our budget are very difficult for us to control. Now, we do have an item here, technology update for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is something that we as a group can control and we put this in there to address obsolete and binging technology. Special education increase is very significant at seven hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. Again, those are special education fees that go to Woodstock Academy, that go to outside facilities and those can be very, very steep costs, especially this year, we'll talk about that in a moment. So all these areas account for ninety-eight percent of our budget increase. So that just gives you a sense of what's, what is driving these increases and, you know, I think we're off the line because we know that inflation has really taken a big chunk out of our pocketbooks over the last couple of years and we're seeing it here at the school level. Alright, so let me talk about the technology refresh, so we, as you, if you've been in our classrooms or you've heard from your children or students, we have really invested in technology and we really did that, especially during the pandemic, we added iPads for all the students. Those iPads come with a four-year refresh through Apple and once that four-year refresh is over, Apple care and all the warranties expire. We had the option of upgrading the iPads and we'd get some money for the older iPad. So one of our decisions was to move on to more iPads, but also in all our classrooms, we have projector-based smart boards. So projector-based smart board, they've been great, they've really worked well, but they're starting to really, really show their age. They're very dim and you can imagine a child going into a classroom, seeing a screen like this compared to very dimly lit projector, spectral in the bright room. We've chosen because the price of these LED smart boards has really dropped significantly. At one point, they were six thousand dollars, now they're around two thousand dollars. So it makes sense to replace and upgrade those smart boards to LED smart boards, similar to what you see here. Again, our iPads, we're taking a look at refreshing iPads from grades three to eight. We know that the middle school iPad that the most use and those are the ones that are really just dying off their batteries, you know, if you have an iPhone, the battery after a year starts to weaken or not hold as much of the charge. Our middle school iPads have really started to show their age and they're getting long in the tooth. So what we're going to do is replace grades three through eight, because those are also the grades that we have to test through the S-Back program. So those are the standardized tests that we have to administer every year, grades three through eight, and those are done individually on their iPads as well. Staff laptops, most of our staff laptops are now four years old, I see a few teachers back there. And laptops, they age rapidly, much more rapidly than in order to desktop computers and it's mostly because of the heat. The heat inside of the laptops really just deteriorates, the components inside and laptops for whatever reason just gets slower and slower and slower. And then our Wi-Fi infrastructure, you know, you see a couple of our access points in the ceiling. All of our classrooms have access points and what we found is when you walk into a building, you bring with you the phone, so our teachers come in, their phones immediately hit the access points. All of the iPads hit the access points, you have a variety of different technologies all just taking that bandwidth out of the air and we're finding that we need to upgrade our Wi-Fi infrastructure to handle all the traffic that's going inside of these buildings, so both the elementary school and the middle school. Will be. So this is not moved out at once, we're spreading it out over a four-year lease. So the total cost of the project, we've been really working to keep it at about six hundred thousand dollar amount, so that the next four years it will be a hundred fifty thousand each year. And our hope is that, you know, we'll have more than enough bandwidth and up-to-date technology for students not to get frustrated, the teachers not to get frustrated and to enhance the educational experience. Alright, here's contractual increases of two hundred twenty-five thousand, so this is collective bargaining. And our collective bargaining in the state of Connecticut is guided by state statute and we have to go into collective bargaining with all teachers and this fall we'll be negotiating with the teachers. We'll also be negotiating this next year with the parent professionals, those are all the classroom assistants, as well as our custodians. So all of those are guided through state mandates and last year our personnel costs were seven million five hundred forty-one thousand and contractual increases this year are seven million seven hundred sixty-seven thousand. So you notice it's a little less than our personnel because some of our office administrative assistants are not part of the collective bargaining unit, so we do have some groups of employees that aren't part of that, so that's why you see the difference. But again, that's a substantial increase and we're preparing because we're knowing what the settlements are coming in at, that's important right now, around three-year contracts and some places that are coming in at fourteen percent over two years. So right now, we're about three percent over each of these years, so you could see a significant increase of that because of these settlements that are being reached right now and then that's something that the state looks at, arbitration looks at, mediation looks at, is what are the settlements around you? You need to sort of follow the line with those settlements, so that could be something interesting that we'll deal with next year. Administrative increases and we have had questions about, if you look into the budgets, there is a sheet with the administrator salaries and one of the things that's important to notice, some of those salaries are, all of the salaries for the administrators are currently below the county, the county of Wyndham average and to say that they're below the state average is not going to save them because some of the starting salaries in some of the districts, if you go towards town, Blasdenberry, some of those salaries are equivalent to or higher than most of the superintendents in Eastern Connecticut. So there is quite a difference around state administrative increases. So we need to maintain and we need to remain competitive. And if you want to retain and attract highly qualified leaders, it is, it is a very difficult type market. So you can see that the average principal salary in Wyndham County, again, which is lowest in the state, is around a hundred forty-five thousand. So we do have questions about the administrative increases and we just wanted to address that, which is just to give you a little background. Transportation increase, this is a big one, four hundred thousand dollars. I added that school bus for Mr. Kessler, is he one of the fancy school buses? It looks good, doesn't it? One point three eighty million dollars last year, this year and next year it's going to be one million seven hundred eighty thousand, so that includes all of the costs of DAPCO, all of their buses and it also includes two additional special education loans that go out to Zilamantic. And each of those, just to give you a sense of what our cost of the buses, it's three hundred twenty-five dollars a day. So, and that's for any of the smaller ones, so it does get very pricey. One of the things that we looked at, it was the possibility of, you know, taking a look at, we'd reach mini lands that are specially designed for school transportation and put some of these smaller loans that cost three hundred twenty-five dollars a day and try to run them ourselves and hire our own, because you don't need the full bus driver license, you only need a CDF. We could possibly save significant amounts, especially on those small buses, three hundred twenty-five dollars a day. We might be able to do it for a hundred twenty-five dollars a day, so that's something that we're going to take a look at as the district does the next few months. Am I talking too fast? Or am I going to? That I'm here in the standouts had a baseball or something. Health insurance is another big increase. Now, the state increase is actually very reasonable, at only two percent. But the other factors that we see if you look at last, this year currently we're paying one million nine hundred seventy-two thousand and next year we're projected to be at two million four hundred fifty-six thousand. So that is more than two percent, now that's a big jump and one of the things that we have to take into account is the fact that our teaching population, their situations change. One of the things that's a nice thing about the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare is that you can, if you're a family, you can keep your adult children on until they're twenty-six years old. Well, we thought that was, that is a good bonus for us, right? But when we hire new teachers, they'll eventually get older and we have a cohort of teachers now that are coming off their families, their parents' plan, which they could have stayed on until age twenty-six. Now they are aging into our plan, so in that time, they may no longer be single, they may be married, they may have children and the cost of the plan to us is around twelve thousand dollars per single. Twenty-four thousand dollars for a couple and a family is around thirty-six thousand dollars. So the variation there is because of people coming off their parents' insurance, getting married, having children, which is all wonderful and we want to encourage it, but it does, it does come with a cost as far as our health insurance plan. And it's a really good plan, it's the state plan and if you're around the state plan now, that is a very, you know, it's a very appealing plan. You do have as family, if you're married, you have the choice of looking at your husband's or your wife's plan and deciding which one would you rather go on, and a lot of times the choice is cameras want to come onto our plan. Now, one thing Janice Thurlow, who does all of our budget work, so she's really knows the numbers. She came to me today and told us, how many changes have we had just this year?
Since July, we've had twenty-five changes in our insurance, which is reflected in those numbers.
So you can change during the elementary period, it starts July first and you can change your plan. So you can elect to come on our plan if you weren't on our plan, you can elect to have family members, spouses, so twenty-five changes that we cannot anticipate fully, they don't, I think, I think maybe ten or a dozen, but twenty-five this year has really a grown impact to our educational process. Alright, here's the big one, special education increase. You see that the increase from this year to next year is seven hundred sixty-two thousand, let me explain that a little bit to you. So we have three kinds of costs, we have Woodstock Academy and to much smaller extent Putnam High School, because we do have a contact with Putnam High School and we do send, I believe, two students, or one student to Putnam High School for special education services. So on twenty-two, twenty-three, our special education tuition at Woodstock Academy was one million sixty-two thousand. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the special ed cost to Woodstock Academy is one point three nine five million dollars, so you can see a huge jump there. And then next year, we're projecting one point eight million dollars as far as the special education. So you can see, special education costs, especially at the high school level, have really been impacted since the pandemic. We've seen that the pandemic has really caused a lot of additional mental health issues, anxiety. You probably have felt it all in your families, I feel anxiety every day I look at these numbers. But it really has impacted our teenage population and the schools are having to respond to this. Our outplacement tuition, these are students that go to a variety of facilities run by East Calm, which is our regional education service center. Also, the learning clinic and a variety of other smaller institutions around the area. Two years ago, those costs for those students were seven hundred fifteen thousand. This year it's seven hundred thirty-six thousand and next year it's seven hundred ninety-one thousand. So our, our costs to be outplaced institutions aren't as severe, we're impacting our budget as the cost at Woodstock Academy, this is not a knock against Woodstock Academy. It's just that they're having to serve the small students. And one of the things that we're trying to do to you know, to be able to anticipate these increases because it's such an unknown, is this year we're adding into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, a contingency lineup. We as a district are allowed to have a contingency of up to two percent each year. So the Board of Education and the administration sat down and said, what do we need to do because you can see this year, we have a four hundred seventy thousand dollar unanticipated expense of special education. So those are students that weren't in special education and weren't in our district at the beginning of the year and they've been reclassified as special education or have been outplacement or have moved in. And sometimes we did have a student this year move in around a hundred thousand dollars. That was not built into the budget last year. So what the Board of Education has elected to do and we've had these discussions with the Board of Finance is let's see what it would take for us to put in a contingency amount and we selected three hundred thousand dollars to give us a cushion to be able to handle an over expenditure in special education without having to go back to the town for additional appropriations. So again, this year we have an over expenditure and again, talk about anxieties, I think we're all feeling it, four hundred seventy thousand dollars. It's a direct, directly a result of special education student placements. These are students, as I said before, that were classified as regular education, but when they're coming to the PPT process, were moved into special education for a variety of needs. Also, students having to be put into an outplacement in one of those programs like the learning clinic or East Calm programs. Increased tuition by designated providers, so one of the things that many states around us, for example, our biggest example is the starting age of kindergarten. Connecticut is still, this year was still the last district, last state in the country to have such an early kindergarten entry age. Everyone else has set September first as when you have to move on to turn five. Connecticut is still allowing to go until December thirty-first. Same thing with special education costs. Connecticut puts no caps on special education costs by providers. The philosophy in Connecticut is we don't want to hinder the quality of education for special needs students, so there are no caps on how much a program can charge a school of its own. So not to say that the costs are overly burdensome, but we did have, after the budget was presented, Janice, what were some of the increases that we saw at the special education level?
We saw in two particular places, it was a thirty-five percent increase and a forty-two percent increase.
So we, you know, we did anticipate some increase by to eight percent, but when you have a thirty-five to forty percent increase and these came in just before July first, that was another factor that really impacted our over expenditure. And here again, there's no rate limits for providers, that may change in the future, but Connecticut is, is very liberal with its interpretations of federal IDBA special education laws and they don't want to put that on the hindrance of providers. And this amount includes two additional special education bus runs, the three hundred twenty-five dollars a day that I talked about earlier, those two additional runs add up to quite a bit over the course of the school year. And the other thing, you know, we talked a little bit about, we have had this huge increase. We do have some relief valves, safety valves built in to mitigate some of the costs of this over expenditure. There is something in Connecticut called the excess cost grant and I know that my daughter, members of the Board of Finance, members of the Board of Education sort of understand excess costs because I just sort of understand it because the rules change. But essentially what excess cost is, is the state sets a limit, so for Woodstock, the limit of the expenditure on the student is around seventy thousand. So if you have a student that is in a placement, as I mentioned earlier, for a hundred thousand dollars, technically the state should give you an excess cost, the reimbursement of that thirty thousand dollars. That's your excess cost above your allowance, which sounds great. But over the years, the state has never really fully funded excess costs, so this year we're anticipating the state to, instead of giving us the full, that full thirty thousand, they're talking about seventy percent of that thirty thousand, so if that student costs a hundred thousand, they will give us maybe twenty-one thousand dollars of that excess cost. So I know that's kind of confusing, but we're anticipating this year, we may get an additional sixty thousand, perhaps less towards minimizing that four hundred seventy thousand dollar over expenditure. We have had fuel savings, our bus and diesel fuel as well as our human fuel. We've had savings there, so we may be able to put those towards that over expenditure. The educational cost sharing grant, the state grant that we get Woodstock gets about four point nine million dollars in direct state aid. They're giving us an additional one hundred twenty-two thousand, so we can take that off of that four hundred seventy thousand. And then we also terminated a educational but non-critical contracted service that we had with Eastern Connecticut State University, so that again, saved us about fifty to sixty thousand dollars, so we're slicing parts of that four seventy down, but it's not likely to be enough, so that's, we had correct conversations with the Board of Finance and had let them know that this is what we're dealing with, so you can see special education, it's not unique to Woodstock, it's happening all over the state. It is really driving a lot of discussion on cost savings in education. Staffing. So we do want to add some staffing at the schools. One of the things that we're talking about is converting a kindergarten teacher to a prepaid classroom, so next year the state of Connecticut is changing the entry age for kindergarten. You have to be age five by September first and that allows for you to have students that aren't coming in as four-year-olds. So instead of having to budget to add another kindergarten teacher, what we are trying to do is convert one of our kindergarten teachers into a prepaid classroom and that is kind of a no-brainer. That will allow us to service those younger children and we expect a real cluster this year because that group of kids that would have gone to kindergarten now on some kind of prepaid, so we're trying to help out the community. And that would be one way that we address that challenge. Because it's a prepaid classroom, we do have requirements under early childhood regulations. We would add two parent professionals to serve in that classroom, so that would be in addition to the budget. We at the elementary school have not had a librarian teacher since two thousand and fifteen. So because of our variations in our enrollment, we know that our second grade classrooms next year, instead of four teachers, we would only have three teachers, so our thought was to take one of those three teachers, instead of just cutting them out of the budget, let's try to Let's try to recover something that we lost a long time ago. So that's a way that we're looking to add a teacher into the library and not impact the budget. And one of the things that we had in our three years plan was adding. Coaches, literacy and math coaches at the elementary school to help with the implementation of the new. Language arts curriculum and the new math curriculum. And this year we are looking to add somebody that would supervise and. Give an overall direction to the Woodstock Elementary School Language Arts Program. Also um work with our S R V I um program and monitor and manage that. Um, and that would give the principal and the other administrators. At the elementary school, we'll have additional time to work out running the building because the buildings um. We don't have an assistant principal at Woodstock Elementary School. We share one between Woodstock Elementary and Woodstock Middle School. So those are the, that's the extent of our staffing. Increases which really the main increases the two parent professionals and that literacy coach, that literacy coordinator. Our facilities, this is always everyone's favorite subject. Woodstock's middle school gym floor is used and abused. Um, we just had an election in there on uh Tuesday. It is also used by not only the school gym program and the school athletics, but it's also used by the rec program. And the rec program especially in the fall and in there, in there every evening and up until a few weeks ago. On the weekends as well. So that floor has taken a beating. We have a quote of four two thousand seven hundred dollars. To replace that floor. Karen Fitzpatrick and Jay Swan are looking at their American Rescue Plan funds, which they have a little bit left up. And they are um hoping to be able to fund fifty percent of that cost of the middle school. Resurfacing. So that will be, that will be a big help. And we also have the Woodstock Elementary School gym. Um, that floor was put in in two thousand and two, and if you've been in the gym floor at the elementary school. It is made up of tiles, um plastic tiles, and they're starting to warp and. It is not the best of service. So we also want to resurface that. That's in this facility's budget. And that's thirty-nine thousand dollars. And then one other thing that we need to address here at the middle school is our heating and A C control system. Is nineteen ninety-five is what it was put in. That's where this building was built. Um, the parts and everything for that system, all the controllers, the condensers. Um, and things like that are starting to break down. And we cannot install the newer updated controllers because our software is proprietary. It's. It's linked to that hardware and it's linked to the company that installed it. So the software update, right now the software that's running this building is Windows X two. And that came out and does anyone know when Windows X two came out in the nineteen nineties? Yeah, after when, yeah, it's a good thing it's not Windows nine five anyways. Um, so that's something that, it's a huge, it is a huge investment. Um, but it's something that we have to do. So I just gave you two pictures here. We do have uh one of the things that we added at that middle school recently as a cheerleader. But the, what I wanted to point out here is the floor itself has become more in that coating. Uh, that coating on the very top, that little thing coating is really starting to wear thin. And when you have cheerleaders making towers like this, I get very nervous when I watch them do it. And I think that it's important to get that building and that floor in good shape. For it. And here is the elementary school. I don't know if you can see this very well, but we do have um the tiles. And the tiles themselves. It's always tricky with that touch pad. The tiles themselves are starting to warp. You might be able to see the individual, but they're starting to come. So that's something that we also want to address and replace. So those are the two costs and one facilities that. Will lead to the increase at the, at the maintenance budget. Alright, so I've given you an overview of some of the needs, some of the drivers of the um budget. And I just wanted to give you an overview now of our academic and extracurricular initiatives at the schools. Right now, we've had academic gains driven by the new math series, the illustrated math series that Woodstock Elementary School. Our academic, um, something we just have recently done. Mrs. Snack and Mrs. Zola on the implementation of the math program and. The teachers at the elementary school worked very hard with a real paradigm shift. Going into this new program, but we've seen just in a short period of time that we've implemented it, we see academic gains. We've also seen academic gains by our E L D and series at the elementary school. And again, that's something that we had in the budget for the last three years. It was a big initial investment. I think the total investment for the Language Arts Program, Janice, was around a hundred thousand dollars over two years. So again, it's a big investment, but we have seen academic gains for that. We reinstated funding for middle school sports. So that was something that we always were charging families for. Last year, this school year, we reinstated the W M S sports and it just made. The whole process so much more pleasant. Kids are able to participate. They don't have to worry about. Coming up, families don't have to worry about coming up or um paying for two degree sports for multiple children. And it would have burdenized some things. And our box us at Woodstock Middle School, we have a fully running band program, a fully running um. Choral program along with our music program. As far as the education, music education part. We also have um Mrs. Meyer doing the art program here at Woodstock Middle School. And she's really, she has an after-school art club. So we do have a really just a. Very positive um atmosphere as far as we're talking. And it's something that we have people saying, well, no, it's mostly in test scores. But as you can see, we're also trying to focus on those extracurricular activities that are so important, especially to. Middle school students' experience. And we do have, as I said, teacher stipends that we're adding into this budget um to pay for the musical, to pay for all the different clubs. The art clubs, the home of the clubs that we have. Um, and those are really then very um. Intergalactic overall and immediate experience of our ministry's students. Alright, so I wanted to share with you, one of the things that we've heard is, okay, you spent all this money, now show us. Where does it go? What, what is it really letting us? Is it just something that we're doing because we have to? This is Woodstock Elementary School Math Academic Growth and went back several years. So you can see, this is all taken from EdSite. Which is the state portal. It has data for all of the um school districts in the state of Connecticut. You can just type in EdSite, E D S I G H T. And EdSite is unique to Connecticut and it'll pop up with the link. So you can see our academic growth in math has been relatively very flat over the last five years. And since we implemented um our math program, we've noticed. That we were very low. So why did we get any math program? You could see at sixteen, seventeen, we were. Um, only at thirty percent, thirty-three percent of the goal. We had a little jump in seventeen, eighteen, plateaued in eighteen, nineteen. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, we increased. And now we've seen with our third grade students. In twenty-two, twenty, we've gone to fourth grade. Eighty-five percent below. The state sets a target and eighty-five percent of the fourth grade is turned down to lower. So that gives us the indication that, okay, this new math program is making a difference. Language arts, same thing. You see it's sort of very flat, just plateaued there in the fifty, tight fifties, low sixties. And Woodstock Elementary School Language Arts score is fifty-one percent in sixteen, seventeen. Fifty-nine percent, fifty-five percent. So we just see it sort of hovering. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two with the E L Language Arts Program. Sixty-three percent of the students meaning goal in fourth grade, now around seventy-seven percent. So we've seen that academic growth all of a sudden happening with the introduction of these two um programs. Woodstock Middle School Math Performance, you can see that math performance at Woodstock Middle School. High sixties, we had a dip at the pandemic and that's something, that's the um middle school, the state, I'm sorry, the state. Um, we saw that the, so you had that drop in twenty-one, twenty-two. And Woodstock Middle School Math in sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and these are compared to the state numbers. We also saw that dip. So you see the dip at the state level and at our level. And right now we're just getting back up to where we were. So what we've done here at the middle school. Is we are also implementing now the E L math curriculum in fifth, sixth, seventh grade. To get those kids from the elementary school. They have the same power language, the same power and. Lesson format and our hope is that we'll see the same increases in math performance. At the middle school as we do at the elementary school. Language Arts Performance, you can see the state um over sixteen, seventeen to twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see that. Drop again at the pandemic. You can notice that there wasn't any testing in nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one. Um, see the drop. And at Woodstock Middle School, we've had a stronger than average with the goal of being at a target of seventy-five. Um, Woodstock Middle School's scores have been. Generally hovering in that low seventies range for the last five years. And we, we didn't experience that drop-off. In scores after the pandemic. So that was something that, you know, we felt, we've got something good going here, so. We're not looking to totally redo and re-fabricate the um middle school arts performance. Um, district accountability performance. So you'll have your S back scores. And you see those reported in the progress. And a lot of focus is done on that. What the state of Connecticut has done is they've created an accountability index. So. They're going to take a look, not at just your test scores, but they're going to take a look at your test scores and. The subgroups within that, those test scores. How much did your special needs students get? How much did your English language learners get? How much, um, what is your attendance level in the district? What is your um physical fitness scores? What are um some of the other data points that? Make for an overall healthy district? And here you can see that this is taking a look just in our area. Um, Brooklyn School District, they have an accountability performance index of sixty-two. Thompson at sixty-four, Putnam at sixty-four point eight. State of Connecticut averages sixty-nine point three. So that's all the districts in Connecticut from the Gold Coast to Northeast. Woodstock Academy does get an accountability score of seventy-two point six. Pomper's score this year was seventy-three point one and Woodstock's score seventy-three point four. So. We can see that all of the different things that we're putting in place is showing results. Whether it's at the elementary school, it's math, learning charts, middle school, language arts program. And now we can take into account all of those other things and we can see that, okay, we're, we're making some progress. We're, we're doing something good along the right track. So when you take a look at all these numbers. I just wanted to share with you um some of the statistics that we shared last year. And these are updated statistics for um the periods twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two for the state of Connecticut. We are seventy-second in per capita income. So of the, I'm looking at eighty-seven um districts. Hundred and sixty-nine, I'm sorry. Woodstock is seventy-second in per capita income. Eighty-ninth in median home value. Our mill rate, which when you calculate our mill rate and equalize it to make everyone on a level playing field. We're a hundred forty-eighth out of one hundred sixty-nine towns. And our per people expenditure still um on the last, last data is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty in the state. So just wanted to show you in Wyndham County, our um per capita income. By fifty-one thousand is the highest in Wyndham County. Median home value, except for Comper, we have the second highest median home value in Wyndham County. I'm sure you know that if you bought a house recently and are paying the mortgage. Our equalized mill rate in Wyndham County, we have the second lowest only to Putnam. Mill, um, as you know, Putnam does have a lot of commercial enterprises and properties from Walmart to um. All the post-towers and everything. So they do have a base that most of these other towns do not have. And then our per people expenditure in Wyndham County, we are second from the bottom. Um, with Brooklyn being the lowest. And you can see that some of these numbers are pretty high. I don't know if you can tell, but. Hampton, Chaplin, Scotland, Ashford, these towns are in the mid to high twenties. For full expenditure. And that's partly a function of their size. You have um a smaller population of students, so you have three hundred students. You still have to hire the music teacher, the gym teacher. You still have to have the administrative um support. So some of those numbers, Comper is probably the second or third highest um. Tuition in the state per people, um but that's a function of their size. We in Woodstock here, we have two buildings, we have two sets of administrators, two sets of custodians. But we have a larger population of about seven hundred fifty students right now. And so our per people expenditure is going to be lower at sixteen thousand dollars because we're spreading it out amongst more students. But just so you can, again, keep in perspective. The academic gains we're making, the um programs we're putting in and instituting, the. The limitations that we have as far as our per people expenditure compared to um. The demographics of the town, I think it's important to note that we are trying to provide the best value. For the people in the town of Woodstock. And again, out of one hundred sixty-nine towns and I do have the link on there if you want to go to the um state portal. But the average um expenditure in Woodstock is sixteen thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars. That includes our Woodstock family tuition. So that's not just Woodstock Elementary and Woodstock Middle School. That's the entire K twelve county. And the state average is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. So we, we always have that argument and board members have that argument. More money doesn't necessarily mean better performance and there's always one to be that debate. And I think we're straddling that line in Woodstock and that we're really post-epicial and post-conscious. Without being accused of overspending, although we'll always agree with overspending. Because let's face it, education is, I hate to put you on the spot now, but education budget is about. Seventy-five percent of the town budget and seventy, seventy-eight percent of the town budget. So. It, we do take up a lot of the town budget and, and the town, um and all the towns around us, that's about what you see for. With the state average, about seventy-eight, seventy-five percent of the budget for education. So critical budget steps. So what are we doing now? Well, we have this forum. Thank you for attending and we have involved our online attending. The next big event that I know. The next big event that I know of, right, and the board of finance are excited about is the public hearing. The public hearing will be in this building, I think we're doing it in the gym, in the gymnasium, we're going to wear out that gym floor a little bit more, put out the chairs and everything. That public hearing, you'll hear pretty much a letter presentation done ourselves, and also Jay Stone will present the town budget. And at that public hearing, I think the board of finances is looking to hear feedback, they're looking for feedback from the community. Um, what do you think of these budgets? Are they too high, are they too low? Do we need to bring one in line with, with the goal of the case of the town? April sixteenth, the board of finance meeting is, I believe, do you set the budget at the April sixteenth?
We'll, we'll set it right in the day, you guys, to go to the town meeting.
So again, you can see now, we have this condensed timeline, it's getting down to crunch time. May seventh is the town meeting.
As far as I know right now, that hasn't been posted, it's confirmed yet, but the, um, the fourteenth is set to be the referendum, so it has to take place somewhere in that timeframe, so I would say, yeah, that's pretty good bet.
You have to warn the town meeting within seven days, is that what it is?
Yeah, seven, seventy, ten days.
So we, you know, we have to follow the town budget calendar. Um, we also have to, you know, try to manage around the state's budget calendar. The state sometimes doesn't set their budgets till the end of June. Uh, send that, sorry, we send that, it, it changes, it's a moving target, so the towns are much more conservative viscerally than the state of Connecticut. Um, but that's where we are, so attendance is critical for the board of finance to hear support or concerns about the budget, um, that's where we are. So, wow, I talked to all this.
So I'll let Victor have a chance to just take a breath and sip water here, but we'll open up the forum to questions. Um, if you would be so kind as to just state your name and address your um, question to, I guess, either Victor Janis who is here or Hans who is our board chair, there are six members of the board here, so we want to vet collectively to field your questions, and then if there are participants on Zoom who want to identify themselves and post their question in the chat, we'll field live questions first and go to the chat and come back to resolve any unfinished business before we adjourn. Okay? So, anyone with a question, just go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Deanna Charzan, I live on Bull Hill Row. Um, I have spoken to Janice earlier, and she feels great to answer some of my questions, but I have some more things that I would like to bring. Um, I have some concerns about your technology refresh plan. And as I understand that top technology does um, outlive it useful, but my concern is it looks like you're doing a lot of refresh in this next year, which means in four more years, we're going to have another large refresh. Why didn't, was there a plan for this to be done previously with any of the COVID uh, relief money? Why, why wasn't some of this worked into some of those funds to save the taxpayer?
That's, that's a very good question. We did use the initial iPhone ones or S and ones, as they call it, for the purchase, the original purchase of the thousand iPads that we purchased in two thousand twenty?
Four years ago.
Yeah, four years ago, so we did use double funds for that. Our smart boards, which is another big part of the increase, those smart boards are from the two thousand sixteen. So they've been on operation for eight years. So we do, we don't anticipate having to replace the LED smart boards for, we're hoping to hold on to those for eight years, so that's a big chunk of that, so we're not looking to refresh everything in four years. It's mostly the small compact devices like the iPads and laptops. And we'll probably have to redo some of the Wi-Fi, depending on how much traffic with that.
And, um, when you spoke about the administrative increases, you referenced towns like Talladega, Glass, and Berry. You referenced towns that have a much higher commercial tax base. We don't have that here. I understand, because I'm a school administrator as well, that when it comes to budget cuts, that it's often the administrators that take the biggest cuts to allow for the staff that work directly with students to, um, to get what they deserve. My question to you is your administrative salary increase are ranging anywhere from four point eight percent to over eight and a half percent. Is it necessary to do those increases all in one year? Can't you work out a plan to raise your, your salaries for your administration going over a three or four year plan instead of hitting the budget all at once with these large increases? I went to your website and I've noticed that you do not have um, openings in your administrative team at this point, so you're obviously not, you're not desperate to get people, you have a full team, so. And again, I also, I looked at some of the salaries, and if you're going to compare your salaries to some of the larger towns like Talladega, Glass, and Berry, I think you also need to compare your salaries to some of the less uh, affluent towns, because your salaries aren't that far out of line. And you also, and I think it would be helpful for the taxpayer, if you feel that your administrative team has taken a hit as far as compensation, it's been signed, that maybe you on your budget worksheets, instead of showing just one expended year, a budgeted year, a proposed year, if you went back and showed maybe five years, so the public could see, yes, your superintendent, your principals, you're not getting the increases that the rest of the school districts is getting. It would just help to have more information.
So that's helpful, yeah, that is. And remember, um, I did, when I said the average principal salary, I said Wyndham County, I did use Glass and Berry and Talladega as examples because they're extreme. Um, but I did stick to the average for Wyndham County, so that was, that was.
And that's, I'm probably just not understanding this, but slide nine, you show a health insurance increase from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five of four eighty-three nineteen. But on your budget sheet, you're actually showing an increase of seven hundred and forty-three thousand between regular and special ed, so can you explain to me what I'm not seeing here?
You want to handle that one, Janice?
No, I don't know.
What, um,
Sorry, I don't need to put you.
One of the things I did is when I did this increase, I tried to just get it to address the increase of two percent in insurance. And when Janice put together the whole broad insurance budget, it was losing a lot of it, it's changed.
So I think that would have been helpful to happen on the slide, because I did know where the seven hundred thousand came from. I had already asked that question. But when you presented it on the slide, you only presented it as a four hundred eighty-three. So I was thinking that maybe I missed something. And I would like to know, did you apply for any of the right to read grants that came up to the state of Connecticut? And is the one hundred thousand dollars that you said that you spent on your uh, reading series, was that one hundred thousand? Did you actually spend one fifty-eight and then got right to read, and you spent a hundred thousand? Or?
Yeah, we, we are applying for the right to read grant, and the EL program that we purchased was several years ago, so we use what I was hoping to do, the ESSR and things like that, so we try to maximize all of our, our grants.
I think that, and again, this is just my opinion, but if we solve where you, what grants you have, what grants you get, and how they're applied to lessen the burden on the taxpayer, I think that would definitely be helpful to see. And then the very last, slide twenty-one, you're talking about being one hundred and sixtieth in per people expenditure. And that's absolutely correct. But if you go, there's a website, and I will share it with you, uh, I can share it with you separately, to the Georgetown Edinomics website, they use the data from, um, I'd say. And they've created a scatterpoint graph of all of the towns, all of the school districts in Connecticut. And while, yes, we are one hundred and sixtieth in per people expenditure, Woodstock schools are among the top performing. They break it out in a scatter plot, and Woodstock is, yes, on the very low per pupil, but you're way up there, and I think that's important for people to understand that even though we've had top forty-six and that has tied our hands, that our students still have been performing admirably, and that's, that's kudos to all of you. I think you've been doing a great job with what you've had. But, but I do have to say that you have to remember that Woodstock is just not made, made up of the more willed to the larger property owners. There's a lot of people in Woodstock that can't afford these types of increases. Your retirees, your veterans, your single parents, and I just feel that coming in with a ten percent increase, I don't feel that that really takes those people into consideration. I know that's all subjective, but that's just my feeling, and I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, I appreciate this. But one of the things that we did talk about with that contingency line up, with like uh, three hundred thousand dollars for special education, does it need to be, that's about one and a half percent of our budget. It's, you know, is, is this, could we go down to one percent? Could we go down to a half percent and still have a hundred thousand dollars? So those are some of the things that we need to take a look at and, and.
But what would you do with that contingency? You didn't have to use it on special education, what's the plan for that?
I have a few things that, as, as we discussed with the board, if you want to take it, might be.
Would you roll it into an account of one percent, which is the example, an account to ten to forty days, uh, should you do with that?
Yes. There are limits on what time can be spent on, especially as here's the cost would be one of the all of our expenditures. And other than that, when this program was originally set up by the state, it was up to the boards of finance to approve that it could be put in place, and at that time, it was limited to one percent of what the current budget for bed budget was. That has been raised now to two percent is what the maximum there, but it's called a non-lapsing fund because there is no limit as to what can be accumulated in the fund. But the agreement at the time was, put this in place here in Woodstock, was that those funds would be strictly on board of finance approval for capital projects and emergency expenses.
Right, would your special one, this way?
Would swing fall under that.
Finally, question, how do we, if this three hundred thousand is in the budget, how do you, how are you sure that if it's not spent, excuse me, towards intended purpose, that it goes into the, the non-lapsing account? Is there a mechanism in place for, because that's three hundred thousand is a lot of money.
Yeah, it is, I agree. Uh, but the way it is, unfortunately, to this point in time, there is basically nothing in that fund. So it hasn't become a big, uh, a big deal, because every year the non-lapsing account ends up being spent, whatever they may be. They never, they never achieve anything to that limit in what they have in additional funds at the end of the year. Uh, no surplus funds, so therefore nothing to go into the non-lapsing account. And as I said, over the years, every time there's been money in the non-lapsing account, it's been spent. But it, it should in fact, I don't know sure exactly how it's set up through the treasurer's office or through your goal budgets, but it should be set up as a separate account. So the money that's in that account is in fact earning interest and growing based on that as well. But again, as I said, unfortunately, the condition we're in, because there's top forty-six in the past and the limits we had, and where we are trying to play catch-up, there is no, there is no money in the non-lapsing account.
Well, hopefully we got any money that we put into that non-lapsing, we would have to go to the board of finance for authorizations and each other. So we want to be completely transparent about it and let people know that that's exactly what it's meant for, it's meant for emergencies, such as special education.
Janice, do you have any other clarifications?
Well, as far as the financials, the funds stay in the, in the town account, yeah, so they are earning interest.
But it's not, it's not identified as a separate account, it's part of the general government budget, but, but it is set aside as for the board then.
Um, let's take a moment and just scan and see if there are some other voices. Uh, and then we'll, we've got one question in the chat that we'll go to.
Yeah, my name is David Drake, hello, I'm around here. Um, I think last year, the year before, we lost our Spanish teacher. And I looked online with the Apple track where you're trying to hire teachers for, or advanced, it's still being ten sec, there's everything. There is no mention of a Spanish teacher at all now. So we now wait away from that, because I think it's important for our seventh graders, our eighth graders, we have them before we go into the high school. And now it's totally obsolete here. And from, there's something in the paper about what you're looking for, and that is not even mentioned. So I think as a parent with a seven, or with a six, eight, or seven, one that was an eighth, a half Spanish, because we lost a teacher, but what's the, moving forward, what is the plan for people? Or are we not having one anymore?
Okay, so I just want to also recognize that that coincides well with the question on the chat from Amy E here, which is, um, I apologize if I missed this, but is there a plan to reinstate a Spanish grammar essence? So, Victor?
So last year, when we did, um, and I'm discussing about top quarter six, and we did identify three-year budget plan, and we did talk as a whole about reinserting that Spanish position in the following year with the realization that it's so difficult, what not find, I'm a Spanish teacher and stuff. But I understand your concern, I mean, it's, it's valid.
Are we marketing to the local colleges around here, are, are we marketing anywhere? Are we not marketing? Because we have UConn's big school right down the road from us. We have a lot of community colleges right down the road from us. Are we going to them, are we going to their teacher career days, are we? What are we doing, or are we not doing that?
Well, we're going to participate in the CT week, which is the posting for state, statewide positions for teaching, and we also will participate in the fairs, it's actually part of our new diversity, educational diversity plan. So Eastcom and other districts will be running, um, fairs, we're participating. And the other thing is, we're also anticipating the state to do some revision of their certification requirements into allowing an influx of future educators, and that's happening in the legislature right now, we're expecting guidelines and arrangements. We do have several, well, we have at least one paraprofessional that's probably fluent in Spanish, has the classroom experience, has a college degree, but because of the stringent certification requirements at the state level, the state is trying to look at alternative paths to allow people like that with that talent to come through this, because right now there's such a huge shortage.
Probably thought about maybe putting it in the budget to help campus certify, if she's fully established. If somebody ran her on the school, that's been thought about. From, um, on the board of that side, or even on your side, Victor, or something, something like that. Where, where she has to stay here for a certain amount of time, or she has to pay back. I don't, that's, that's, if there's something you want to hear that is full advantage, that might be an option. Right, something like that, I'm just trying to throw it out, yeah, yeah, to the board of that, trying to throw it, give all the.
If I could jump in for a second, Victor, this is, you know, I, I, it's the same age, the same exact difference, and this is something.
You know, I I it's the same thing, the same exact, and this is something. That personally, we. Were torn with as well, because the right answer in an ideal world is. Let's throw some Spanish teacher back in the budget. Go get a talented teacher in the budget too while we're at it, and other things that I desperately need. But the problem is, we're already at nine percent, nine and a half percent, and if we come and say, you know what, we're going to be at twelve percent. It it's a matter of. Weighing each year how much. What we can change and where are those priorities.
I understand, but we had, we had that person in the budget already, that's not, that's not a new position, eh?
It's, it's not, but. With everything else jumping up and where we had to, we used that Spanish teacher. Do you remember when we used that position or a different position?
We had in suburban, so LA, LA position.
Yeah, it was a new LA position. That Spanish teacher, when that went away, it became a new language arts teacher. So we weren't even able to find this guy.
Now we moved to a different position. So now we, so now we lost, now we lost that position.
Well, there's no doubt over the years, we've lost lots of programs. I mean, in this budget too, we're, we're. Moving a position over all the area. I mean, for kids not to have a library in their schools. So we're built, we're trying to build that back in, but we're also trying to have. A duty to the community to not go over the top with the free stuff. So we, we had to kind of prioritize, so it's a.
But that's why this meeting here is an idea with with the Spanish teacher here. Tell her she needs to be here a certain amount of time. The the uh uh part of uh one professional, whatever she, whoever she is. Give her a toast, she needs to be here a certain amount of time, well, she has to pay back, so it's. It's a win win for the community, it's a win win for her, it's a win win for our students.
It's absolutely a win win if we have budget money to pay her as a Spanish teacher. And and and. Right now, in this budget, we don't have that. We should. In in a better world, we have the money to have a Spanish program, because I think it's critically important.
And also too, if the state changes the legislation for her certification, uh or that person's certification, do whatever. We we will be able to retain and take that into consideration.
And what is the permit? Do they have a time period?
Yeah, they're they're talking, you you've heard High and Sky talk from the state legislature in the last month or so, where they're talking about. A minimum teacher salary of sixty thousand dollars, a minimum parent professional salary of forty five thousand. Those things are. Very likely won't happen, but one of the things they are talking about is. That internship program where you could take a teacher. Like this parent professional that we have, the state would kick in that internship class. For a year of getting their certification. And then that person would, after a year of service in the district, after leaving one of these fire things. Plus the funding from the state, we then be element of the service relationship. So those are the kinds of creative things the state is working on.
Thank you. Let me just. Anybody else in your room have a question or?
If I can, if I can add one thing to that, just so you know where we're, where I guess I'm thinking because the board number is. I I you're not going to see Spanish teachers in this budget, I think, because based on where the budget is. Next year, hopefully. And and as we get there, and and where our eyes are on it is not we don't want it, it's not we don't think it's important. It's, again, this is what we were saying when Prop forty six went away, we have a lot of holes to fill. And you can only do so much and be physically responsible, otherwise the whole thing's going to blow up. And it's, it's, there's, there are going to be things that we desperately need that we can't afford now.
Thank you. I'm Mrs. Shenees, give me a night, I live on New Wood Drive. As far as home insurance. I'm just curious of how much um the district percentage pays for the. Insurance, is it a hundred percent? Is it forty sixteen?
Most staff teachers um. Teachers, custodians, parents.
So the district paid each.
And that's, that's done to be collected by.
There's a question in the chat. He says, hi, good. Um this question is from Sherry Madden, my lovely church vegan. Um the addition of the pre K teachers. Would that mean that all children in Woodstock that meet the age criteria will have pre K available, or? Will it be limited to a lottery like it has been in the past?
That's, that's a really good question. One of the things that I've. We're seeing in Woodstock definitely, and all surrounding communities and the entire state of Connecticut is. The population of younger children, um. Families having children, multiple children, is really dropping. We're seeing people waiting longer to have children, if they do have families that have children, they may only have one child. Instead of the customary two or three, and that's due to all kinds of pressures that influence people's mindsets. Um people wait longer to get married because they're married to their phones. And we're seeing, um you know, we're just seeing a delay in the the size of families that are impacting. So our hope is that we may eventually, if not this year, within the next. Couple of years, be able to offer a group home to everyone without having to go to a lottery. Simply because of the demographic shift that we're seeing.
Victor, I'm wondering if that question might be related to the transitional pre K program? That which would be specific to only certain age kids?
Right, well, we we're being, the transitional program would take, you know, right now. We're trying to get a, figure out how many of those students there are in that gap, that four, four year old, five year old gap. And we will be able to take additional student, four year old students into that program. That would have been in the lottery, so if we look at it as possibly fourteen, fifteen students per group. Um and being able to service maybe, you know, forty. Um pre K students, some of them in the halfway program, so you have an additional fifteen. So now we're talking fifty five, sixty, we may be able to accommodate all those kids in that age range.
But also there's a school readiness grant that that they're looking, that the elementary school is preparing or trying to. Uh meet the population, so that's, again, that's down the road, but.
Um Sherry, wherever you are, uh do you have follow up questions? Please post them in the chat, Victor, we have the others below that.
If if I understand the Sherry's question, the 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 answer I hear out of that would be. We hope with this program, if it happens, more kids will come in and lottery perhaps the full amount. But it's still a chance that there will be a lottery, just hopefully a larger percentage case. And this is a a transitionary year, so this. At, this is not a promise, it's what happens next year. Well, next year with no transition, it might go back to kindergarten classes depending on student population. So it's not like, hey, we're moving the free pre K for everyone, right? It's a transition.
You know, touching on that point, one of the things that we had happen, especially in the younger grades, is we used to have. Ninety or so kindergartens coming in, and we're seeing that number right now. Recently, there's been around sixty to sixty two, so. That gives you an indication of what we're expecting to see when this number of three to four to five year old ages. Is just not as many as it used to be. Families are different, you have um a lot of two income families now because. Looking at those moving in their own values, they're much higher, so families um are in a prioritizing. What they can and can't do as far as world to build. So it's a really complex demographic socioeconomic shift that's happening all along.
Victor, would you check the. Right there to see if we have anything else. Very self set, okay, great. Um we're closing in on about an hour and a half, and I just want to be mindful of folks' time, um. Any other? Questions?
Hi, um my name is Ethan Orsor, eleven, a good trail. Um my question is regarding special education. My name is Sue, based on what you mentioned about thirty to forty percent decrease of the wide range. I guess my question speaks to, is that something that you can negotiate? Because what what is the district getting? With a forty percent increase? Is it nothing? Is it what it's always been? Why are there other providers that you can call and say, hey? People we have right now are giving us a four point increase, can you do better? I know, and it's all discussed and thought about thoroughly. Maybe this seems, because again, I don't know anything about that, but I assume this, sure, the state can't cap it, but maybe you can negotiate. I'm sure it's been considered at length.
No, it's it's a, it's a really good point, and you know, one of the things when looking into this research in this is. If you are a larger district, um you could be on the bottom of students going into these programs. They sometimes have the ability to negotiate, um you know, more reasonable rates because they're sending the majority of that. Facility students. The fact that we only have a handful going to our facilities gives us much less liberal response negotiation. But it's something that if the state would say you can't exceed this amount of behaviors, would be helpful.
And on that level of discussion, there has been, um you know, ideas brought up of expanding a special ed. Program to maybe have more in-house services to try to control those costs. But that's, you know, that's a, trying to compare to see if that's even a benefit to it, when you're talking about increasing the budget. If it's a thirty percent increase on special ed, but you. Uh need to increase the the budget by fifteen percent because you're going to develop this new program. Yet it it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking to try to explain those uh benefits and costs. And try to justify it.
And as a whole, it's here. Cost, kind of process to develop the right resources, staffing, facilities. That's not, in one year, we could run in our budget.
And one of the things that we're um, we're seeing from Woodstock accounting is there are also been responsive. And right now they have a two tier special education program, you know, stage one, stage two, they're looking at. Adding a third tier, which would be students that may go out to a different facility. And their pricing combined with the fact that we wouldn't have the busing costs. If they create a program in-house and you don't have to send those students to. Willamette or Brooklyn or places like that, we could save significantly amount on the busing costs and. Those are the kind of creative things that as partners, we Woodstock, um we may be able to choose cost savings.
But also part of that is our families that the program about the plan to choose is sort of the goal. Is is their choice and sometimes we can't say, well, you have to do this program because it's cheap. We don't have to go to the shitty back.
But those two buses that we were talking about in the program, I think that's well over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, please, just one more, yeah. Um again, Dina, Charzan from Full Health. Is it possible to let the board of that hold their meetings? Um like this one has been held, so that people that can't um. Can't come in person and actually watch these meetings, can you also post the recording? Along with the minutes so that, you know, your people who work nights or busy with their deals with sports, just so that. If right now. There's no documentation partly attached to your minutes. You have started putting the budget and expense report, which is nice. But that doesn't give you enough information, and I think if there's an audience out there that will find. The recordings to go back and review on the weekend, or if they work nights during the day. I think that would be really helpful, and I would just like to ask that you consider that.
Well, I think it'd be very easy, like we can have uh Zoom to put it.
Yeah, and this meeting will be likely sent, we'll be put up with the.
But we also want to have.
Do it in school district I work at, so the meetings are recorded.
We'd also like to have more community forums like this, that too. Which, that's what you do.
Just as a matter of sort of logistics, when Ashford posts the recordings, are they just video or they audio? So is it, is it posting the.
The meeting is recorded as soon as it's called or what?
I I I think we had looked into that at some point, I don't remember what the issue was, but I I.
Prior to COVID and prior to. Yes, but the Zoom provides an option now. They don't report the breakout sessions or the executive session, just the public portion of.
Is there something that you have had posted before that?
Well, we'll actually look into that, especially with Zoom.
Any other final questions? All right. Dina, we will adjourn. Thank you so much again for your time and your engagement, and as a result of your particular evening, you are required. To leave here with baked goods, so please to hold on a minute and take a little.